Welcome viewers, this is episode three of Canadian Mosaic. It's a special series which we are doing on municipal elections. In the first programme, you heard Patrick Brown, Mayor of Brampton. In the second, we spoke to a candidate from Missaga. And today, we have brought for you a young and bright Adil Khaleki. Welcome to our show.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. And Adil is contesting election from Milton Ward Three for councillor.
Yes, for town councillor.
Yeah. So Adil, please tell us about yourself and how did you get interested into this?
Yes, absolutely. So I was in nineteen ninety-nine, I was born in Pakistan, in Lahore. And I moved to Canada with my family shortly afterwards when I was one years old. And I lived in Toronto for a bit till about two thousand and twelve. And in two thousand and twelve, I moved to Milton, which is where I live right now. And as the years progressed in Milton, I fell in love with the town. You know, it's such a small town community that's growing so quickly and has a population that cares for each other and a community that cares about, you know, helping each other out. And that's what vested me into being part of the community in Milton rather than just being in the community. Other than that, I went to school at Milton District High School. After graduating there, went to Mohawk College and did police foundations and advanced police studies. And I've now been a police officer serving the community for over almost two years now. And that's the reason I'm running because I believe that as a police officer, it's about serving the community, engaging in public service and helping people. And that's the type of skill that I want to bring over to this role as well. So that's a little bit about me.
That's so wonderful. So being a police officer, you can contest elections. And if you win, then you will take a sabbatical, you will resign. What will, what happens to the police service?
So it's a bit different in municipal elections. The Police Services Act actually allows candidates to be a candidate in a municipal election. And even if you win the election as a police officer in municipal, as long as you're not policing in the same municipality that you are elected in, you can continue to be an elected official as a councillor and continue to be a police officer. Because I'm not a police officer in Milton, I police in a different municipality. And I'm contesting in the municipality that I live in, which is what allows.
And that's so wonderful. I mean, there's such flexibility is something we also need probably in other countries. So tell us a bit more about that, like this being councillor is not a full-time job? Because being police officer is a twenty-four seven job, as I understand.
Yes. So local town councillor is not full-time in nature. There are certain dates that we need to attend council meetings. And the schedule that I have in policing is very flexible and it's easy to be accommodated around the times when I'm needed to, you know, attend council meetings and do my duties as a councillor, hopefully when elected. So it's able to be accommodated.
Okay, that's wonderful. And tell us about a bit of your policing, like real, like which, because in police, there are several branches. And I think you can offer us a bit of a tutorial in Canadian policing also, particularly municipal and local policing.
Yeah. So first of all, I love policing, you know, it's, it's an amazing job because you get to go into those tough situations and solve people's problems. I've only been on for almost two years now, like I said, and I'm part of the uniform patrol section. So where are your frontline police officers? When somebody calls the police through nine-one-one or through non-emergency, whether that's a more serious crime in progress or a neighbour dispute, where are the frontline uniformed officers that go to that call, listen to the situation and come up with a solution? So that's what I'm doing right now. And through that, I'm learning and, you know, building the skill set that I already had to, you know, become a police officer. But building those skills such as communications, problem solving, teamwork, and going above and beyond for people when they're at their, in many cases, worst point in their life as a police officer.
I will get back to this because if I ask that question, it will look like a digression, but it is not a digression. For people with community engagement experience and community involvement, of course, can bring a lot of value to their policing job also. Like how to respond in a certain situation, particularly where mental health is involved and all that. We'll get back to that. And then let's get back to your campaign. So give us an idea, how big is the constituency in the, in the sense of number of votes or in the sense of square kilometre area?
Yeah. So the town of Milton is divided up into four wards, wards one, two, three and four. I'm running for the Ward Three area, which is a unique ward because that's the ward which is seeing tons of new development coming in. And it will foresee much more development that's going to need to happen in the coming years as well. And that's the ward I'm contesting in for the local level, which is also in a unique situation right now because the current councillor there, he's running for regional councillor this time. So this local position is open for new representation to be elected. And I think that allows for that open door opportunity for constituents in Ward Three to choose somebody who's going to have a fresh new perspective, to get the results that they need and, you know, solve the problems that they're facing or challenges that they have moving forward. But yeah, we elect two councillors per ward, one is a regional councillor and one is a town councillor.
So there are eight representatives. And so how are you placing yourself? I mean, there are three ways to look at any campaign. One is how many doors you have knocked. We'll get to that in a bit. The other is like, there is an assessment of your potential to win from how many volunteers you have, what type of fundraising you did and what type of diverse community people are supporting you. And the third is of course, a very, very intuitive or gut feeling. So we'll start from the gut feeling.
Yes. Yeah. Well, I'm feeling great, you know, because I'm a person who works really hard. And I strongly believe that if somebody works hard and is passionate about what they're doing and if their heart is in the right place for what they want to do with the job that they're going for, that they will be able to, you know, get the position that they're fighting for. Because that's how much it means to me in this case. That's the reason I became a police officer, you know, to serve the community, to help make a difference in people's lives and be the person that someone, when they're in a challenge, can go to and look at that person and say, hey, I need help with something. What can you do for me to help you? And that's the kind of person I am, which directly will translate into this position as well. And to be able to earn people's support, I'm out there canvassing, knocking on doors. I'm out there making phone calls. I have a team of volunteers that come with me periodically to do this too. The signs are up as of mid-September. And we're out there, we're building that momentum. And we're putting the case out to the residents of Ward Three and giving them the choice that they have to elect a person who's already serving the community, who has amassed thousands of hours of community service in volunteering, who is young, energetic and ambitious and will do what it takes to fight for the residents of Ward Three. That's what I'm putting forward to the residents and I'm hoping that it resonates with them and that I can earn their support.
It will, it will. So tell us about like, how did you reach out to volunteers? How many volunteers you've mobilized? Tell us about your volunteers a bit.
Yeah. So my network's actually been built through the volunteering that I've done ever since I was younger. When I was ten years old, I, that's when I first started volunteering in the community. I've helped with numerous political campaigns. I've helped with Mothers Against Drunk Driving, Crime Stoppers of Halton, Milton Navy League Cadets, which is a local youth program, other charity fundraisers. And through these events and throughout my high school experience, helping within high school related events as well and college events at the college level, I've developed a friend group and a network that have, you know, also come out with me to help volunteer for those type of things. And I've, you know, reached out to them when it came down to this opportunity here. And lots of them are open towards helping me out in my campaign. And it's mainly just my friends and close, close people that I've come to know over the years through my experience.
Volunteering is a great way of developing new relations and those new relations are actually once social capital. And this is the time when that social capital turns into, you know, further social capital which is helping you. That's, that's great beginning. So when did you first think of contesting election?
I've always had an interest in politics. Like I said, the first time I volunteered was when I was ten years old. And it was actually for a municipal election back in Toronto, which is where I lived. And I was out there as a ten-year-old knocking on doors for this one municipal election candidate. And I just fell in love with the concept of, you know, listening to people, communicating, being around people and just, 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 just helping people. You know, that's the bare root of it. It's, you know, from volunteering events where I've just helped set up a table and someone says, hey, thank you so much for your help. Those type of things I find really rewarding. And doing what I can to, you know, help people is something that drew me towards this.
Without naming that candidate, is that candidate also contesting elections currently or?
It's funny, yes, he actually is in Toronto, in one of the writings over there. So yes.
Wonderful, wonderful. It'll be great that if you get elected and that person is also elected, so that person inspired, you know.
Exactly. Yeah. No, no, that, that person was a motivational figure. I'll say his name is John Burnside. He's running for Don Valley East in Toronto. He used to be a police officer as well and a former Toronto City Councillor as well. And he was one of the first people who.
So the reasons of wanting are more than just one?
Yeah, yeah. There's a number of reasons, you know, it's, it goes, it's mainly public service, extending that service that I'm already doing as a police officer into this role, to, you know, having motivational figures in my life like John in this case, who I've looked up to, you know, and throughout the years, helping with other campaigns as well at the provincial and federal level. Seeing, working for good candidates on the campaign trails, seeing the passion that they have and the commitment that they have to wanting to make a difference in their community. That's really inspired me to want to do that myself as well.
Okay. So when candidates mobilize volunteers, of course, they also then try to do fundraising. For mayor election, for MP election, there are more funds needed, I guess. So what is like, tell us about that aspect, like how many funds one needs to raise? And funds can be raised through various means. So tell us about that, like how many funds one needs to have to have a decent campaign?
Yeah, absolutely. So individual candidates, we all have spending limits that.
What's that limit?
It's different per ward, you know, because it depends on the number of electors and a few other factors. And the town of Milton will determine, in this case, yeah, the town of Milton will determine how much one candidate or their spouse together can spend on their own campaign. Which is, the reason they have the limit is they want to encourage donations from the public through, through other means. So that way, a person who's really wealthy doesn't have an advantage over someone who's less wealthy in these type of things. So that way, it's an equal playing field. Yeah, donations are important. It honestly depends.
So what's that ceiling of like, how much a candidate or their spouse together can spend on a campaign?
Yes. So it's different for each ward. Yeah.
So what's it for, what's it for you?
For Ward Three, I believe the new number come out is about eight thousand. Is the max that I as an individual candidate or if I had a spouse can spend together on an individual campaign. The rest has to be accrued through donations.
Okay. So now the second part of the question, how much money you think one should have for a decent campaign? Ten thousand, twenty thousand, fifty thousand?
For, it's hard to say because it depends on how many signs they're going to put up. It depends on how much literature they're going to need to print out. So it honestly all depends. But I think the groundwork is really important. It's meeting with the residents that you want to represent and getting your message out there. You don't need lots of money for, to be able to do that. So if you're able to do that, I think the amount you'll need to spend will vary, you know, it might be a lot.
And has like social media and reaching out to people on this web-based platforms, I think it must have brought the costs down over the years, like as compared to previous campaigns?
Yes, yes. Social media is a great tool, you know, to get the message out there. Especially after the two years where everything went virtual pretty much because of the pandemic. Lots of people, you know, have looked at ways to get their information through virtual means. And programs like these, social media sites are key tools as part of a successful campaign.
And the third part of this conversation is like, how many doors are there to be knocked and how many you have covered?
Yeah, I think there's about ten thousand doors in, in Ward Three because there's been a lot of new development there as well that needed to be covered. I'm proud to say that I'm pretty much near the end of knocking almost every single door. And I'm on track to completing the rest of the ward as well in my canvassing efforts. I've never sent a canvas out without myself being there, you know. It's either me alone at the doors or it's myself with like three, four other people. Because I strongly believe in the candidate themselves should be putting a face to the name when they're meeting with voters.
Okay. So how, what type of response you are getting from the doors you knock at and the people who come out of those doors?
Yeah. So, so people are excited that there's an opportunity for them this time around to have somebody new elected into the local town councillor position, given that it's an open seat. And I think it's really resonating with people, the fact that we have a candidate who's, you know, committed to public services, passionate, young and energetic about doing this. And that's my message to voters. And I really think that it's resonating with them because I'm getting a lot of positive feedback at the doors.
That's wonderful. Viewers, we will take a little break, a short break, and then we'll come back. And then we'll ask Adil, how, like, what is his election premise? And what are his promises? Like if he's elected, what transformations or changes he'll bring to this constituency? Please remain with us. We'll be back shortly. Welcome back viewers. We are talking to Mr. Adil Khaleki, who is a contesting election for councillor from Ward Three in Milton. Yes, Adil, please tell us about your election campaign and the platform.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So my platform is rooted in conversations that I've had with residents before, while I was in the process of filing my nomination papers. And it's made up of four parts. And those parts are road safety, street parking, public services and public consultation and engagement. Now, to break those down, the first part of that is road safety. You know, residents have ongoing concerns in relation to aggressive driving and bad behaviour on our roadways. There's a lot of families, Milton is a family-based town and the children are at play. People are walking, people are cycling and they're seeing a change, a bad change in driving behaviour that's causing them problems. And I'm proposing that when elected to council, I will liaise with the local police service of jurisdiction to get them to be aware of the problem areas that we have and get them to come and do enforcement in those areas so that we can hold those drivers accountable. And I'm also proposing that we implement technology-based enforcement such as photo radar in school zones and those vulnerable areas to keep people safe from people who choose to speed on our roadways. The second part to this is, is street parking. We have very strict bylaws in relation to our ability to park on the street, especially during overnight hours and during the daytime. What I'm proposing is to build off of the system that already exists. So right now, you can get eighteen parking permits for overnight parking per year, per plate. I'm proposing that we increase that from eighteen and that's what I would push for. And I would also push for extending the daytime street parking time allowance beyond the currently allowed five hours. So that way, it prevents residents from getting fined forty dollars from parking in excess of five hours. And it prevents that overnight fine for forty dollars as well because now they have more days to choose from. And then we can always look at new ways to be more lenient in that regard. But that, those are conversations to have at a later time. So this would be the quickest way to implement that. The third part of the platform is public services in which Milton has seen a rapid increase in growth in our population and a bunch of new homes being constructed. The reality is though, on the contrary, our public services such as infrastructure, snow removal and fire services have failed to keep up with this growth. We need to invest more in these services and I'm going to propose that we increase funding for those services. I'm also proposing that we increase funding for the transit system in Milton and look to add new bus routes to connect us to nearby municipalities so that we can actually have a transit system that gets people going to where they need to be.
Okay. One, one little question on this, like in fire services and for this snow removal. Is it the municipality or the town of Milton which is investing or province also? Or the region, or Halton Region also contributes to that? So like, if you are a councillor, how much in, and if you succeed in influencing the town to increase investments? So what is, give us an idea like how much it is being invested now? And what is the benchmark you are aiming to introduce?
So, so we can fund these services through a number of means. A large amount of the funding comes from property taxes at this time. However, there are other ways to look at increasing that funding through other means. So we can still keep property taxes relatively low. So the third part of that public services platform is lobbying the provincial government to get funding to be able to pay for these services and the much-needed investment that's needed in them. So that way, we can, we can avoid increasing property taxes so dramatically, but at the same time, get that funding from somewhere else. We can also look at user fees for certain areas and bylaw fines and seek reasonable increases in those places as well. So that way, we can still keep, like I said, the property taxes as low. And they are the lowest right now compared to the other municipalities that make up Halton Region. But they don't need to be the lowest compared by, by over fifty percent. They can still be increasing. I think the public expects reasonable increases here and there. But we, they expect that their money is being used in an efficient way to pay for the services that can have quality services in our town. And the last part of our platform or my platform is public consultation and engagement, which means that I will host monthly public meetings with Ward Three residents. So that way, they're not just seeing me throughout an election time, you know. That's always a complaint from residents, be like, hey, you politicians only come here during an election season. I want to get rid of that, you know, reality in many cases. And I would do that by having proactive monthly meetings with Ward Three residents, welcoming them to a location, hearing from them their concerns over the term of four years and keeping them up to date with what's going on in council. And I would promote a lens of diversity, equity and inclusion when making decisions in councils. That way, the public is, you know, the decisions made are rooted in keeping the public's diverse interests in mind as well.
How diverse is Milton's demography? Like, is there like many diverse populations? Or there are like one dominant group and then other like smaller segments of other populations?
Yeah, yeah. As Milton continues to grow, most of that growth is diverse growth. You know, we have a large South Asian community in Milton, both a lot of people from India, people from Pakistan, people from the Philippines, you know, there's, there's a large amount of diversity in, in Milton. And I've actually seen so much of it when I've been knocking doors too, you know. I'm meeting, meeting people at the doors and I, sometimes I ask them, I'm like, hey, where are you from? And it's, it's amazing to see the different cultures that we have in Milton, in our ward.
How are the like sports and recreational facilities in, overall in Milton and in your ward?
Yes. So, so we, we do have facilities in the town that provide, you know, those recreational amenities. However, those systems book really quickly. When, when, when a space is open, if you're not on that app, you know, booking that time slot, within like two, three minutes, it's booked. So like I said, that, that falls under the public services area too, right? As we continue to grow, the demand for, for more services of this nature are, is something that's a reality and that's what the public is expecting of us to, you know, have for them. So that way, they don't have to go to Mississauga or other municipalities to get that type of service, right? We want to keep people in our municipality and strictly comes down to us being able to keep up with the investments, with the growth and having a balanced approach when looking at those two things.
So let's like get back to this very important slogan or premise you have, aggressive driving and road rage. And your approach is that you work with police and the focus is on enforcement and on basically, I mean, making people pay for their bad behaviour, let's put it this way. Are there other ways of engaging community? I mean, could young people, because you're a young person and you know like what makes people drive aggressively or why people indulge into road rage? So are there other community engagement avenues where people can be, you know, made aware of this, made aware of this aggressive driving and all that? And will you be looking at into that type of engagement also?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so the first part of my plan for making our roads safer is liaising with Halton Police. So that way, we can, you know, work with them to, to get drivers, not just like, you know, it doesn't have to be strict enforcement, everybody that's breaking traffic law gets a ticket. It can also be an awareness campaign. But those campaigns have to come from the police service of jurisdiction because they're the ones who are in charge of enforcing our law. But if they're not aware of the areas that these problems are happening and if they don't have, you know, a voice of the residents in the form of a councillor going to them to advocate those concerns, that they're not going to be able to sit down at the table and come up with a plan to educate drivers about this. Because that's a huge component, education and awareness. The police, I can personally verify based on my experience as a police officer, you know, we are very short-staffed in many cases, sometimes as well. And.
And overworked also because of that, yeah?
Absolutely. And proactive initiatives like looking for cars to stop usually happens when there are less calls for service on the board and, and the, because those come first. And that's when we look at, you know, proactive measures. So we have to look at that as well.
How is the public transport facilities, both access-wise and frequency-wise in, in Milton and particularly in your ward?
Ridership on our transit system is very low at the moment. And I believe that's largely because our transit system doesn't really connect us to those nearby municipalities. Like, you know, we, we don't really go to the border of Mississauga. I think they're, they did make some recent changes as of September, early September, that now we have a bus that goes to Liskergo Station. However, we need to do more to connect our transit system to other municipalities because the point of a transit system is that if somebody that lives in Milton goes to school in Toronto, they won't be able to use the Milton Transit System to connect them to.
To their schools, posing they're going to York University or.
There you go, right? Yeah. So we, we need to look at that. If we add those bus routes, that'll increase ridership and we'll be able to get people where they need to go.
And how are the health facilities? Like which hospital caters to Milton? And tell us a bit about that.
Yes, we, we have a hospital in Milton, Milton District Hospital. And public healthcare actually falls into the scope of regional council, which is a position that voters will also elect. They have a much bigger impact in relation to public healthcare in this election.
And what are the other community issues which may not be part of your campaign? But of course, once you are a public representative, and I understand that when you are campaigning, you have to be very focused on three or four things, which you can, you know, repeatedly tell people that these are the major issues we need to address. But are there other issues which in your view, people in Ward Three in general, in particular, but generally in Halton, in Halton Region or in Milton, they, I mean, there are those issues, but they are not being addressed?
Yeah. You know, you know, the large, main, main thing I'd be hearing is, is the growth. You know, lots of people are either in favour of the growth, but not in favour of the way the town has done it so far. There are places, there's a place in Ward Three where we're getting high-rise building coming in, in a very condensed area. There's warehouses coming in our ward as well. So how we plan our, our growth and our planning is something that's very much on the minds of constituents at this time. And it's a very delicate issue because growth is prescribed by the province of Ontario. And our job is to see to that growth by allocating land towards where we're going to put houses, residences, and then we need to zone that land in relation to how it's going to be distributed.
We will, we will continue this conversation. This is very important.
That, that's the main.
It's the time, a time for a little break, short break again. We will, we will rejoin after a short break. We are talking about like other issues which Milton is facing. And Adil was telling us about those other issues, particularly growth-related. We will resume this conversation as soon as we come back. Stay with us. Viewers, welcome back to our show, Canadian Mosaic. We are talking to Mr. Adil Khaleki, who is running for the election of, for the seat of councillor from Ward Three in Milton. Welcome back to the show.
Thank you.
Now, Khalek, please tell us about this voter behaviour in this constituency and, and in Milton generally. What type of voter turnout has been there? What type of voter turnout you're expecting? And people who are the first time voters, probably they should naturally gravitate to vote for you. So tell us like, tell them, how can they access like the polling station? How can they access that information, that what they need to do, where they can go? If they haven't got that voter card, who should they contact?
Yes, absolutely. So in municipal elections, the voter turnout historically has been pretty low, you know. In twenty eighteen, it was about thirty percent. The goal this time for myself and I know for other candidates as well, is we need to increase the voter turnout. We need more people to come out and vote because municipal elections are so important because they deal with your everyday issues. Advanced voting is from October tenth to the sixteenth. You can go to any of the advanced voting locations and last date of vote is October twenty-fourth. You do not need your voter card to vote because that's a common misconception. Whether you, sometimes people get it, sometimes people don't. If you don't get it, all you need to do is you can still go without it. Just bring an identification that has your name and address on it and they will allow you to vote in the ward that you belong to. So, so that's the goal this time around, to increase the voter turnout. And I think that this time around, by having, you know, as, as a young person that's energetic and out there that's showing that passion to the residents, I think we'll be able to do that this time around.
Okay. In certain areas, and generally in Canada, seniors' population is growing. And they're reaching almost to twenty-five percent, one every, one in every four person is a senior. Seniors have a particularly diverse seniors who came here as immigrants or who came here as sponsored by their children. They have usually mobility issues, accessibility issues. So in certain municipalities, I know that there are people who mobilize transportation and then reach out to seniors and transport them to polling stations. Do you think that is an issue in your constituency? And are there any plans you or other candidates may have?
Yes, yes, absolutely. The town of Milton has contingencies in place in relation to opening the door to accessibility for voters that require accommodations. You know, arrangements can be made for a voter that needs an accommodation. a voter that needs an accommodation to come out and vote, and that can be arranged, yes, transportation.
Okay, so that is, that is on the cards.
Yeah, that's on the card. Uh, at the end of the day, if somebody needs a ride to the poll, I will drive you to the poll.
Okay.
You know, lots of candidates are willing to do that as well, um, to, to ensure that we can get people to vote because it's that, that's important.
Okay. Uh, are there more young voters, like, or there are like middle-aged voters? Please tell us about the demographic of voters, your potential voters.
Yeah, so Milton is a family-based town and the average age is about thirty-four years old in Milton. Um, council doesn't really reflect that, right? You know, I am the youngest candidate that's running, uh, for the local position in Ward Three. And I think that speaks volumes and is important to have a mixture of, uh, that type of experience level and representation in council. We need that mixture of diversity, that young perspective mixed with the older experienced perspective. So ensure that we can, when looking at the problem-solving model, when we're looking at a decision that requires a solution, um, you know, we, we, we need to, uh, be able to have a mixture of experience levels at the table making that decision.
That's wonderful. So in these four seats for, uh, which are like local seats, how many total candidates, if you have a rough idea, are running? And how many of them are young like you? None or maybe couple?
Yes, for Ward Three Local, I'm the youngest. Um, and there, there's, I am competing against four other opponents, um, who are also fresh candidates and, uh, no, they, they, they're not as young as I am and, uh.
Are there any women also running in this election?
Yes, there's, uh, two women running.
Uh, in this ward?
In Ward Three Local, yes.
And in the other like, uh, three seats, like, uh, what's the demography or what type of candidates there are? Or this is the, this is the real battleground, where, where is the like, uh, fierce competition?
Uh, the, the fierce competition is, is honestly like when there's no incumbent in, in a ward, like for the local level this time around.
That's what I.
I would say that those races are always the most interesting to watch, given that, uh, uh, residents will be choosing somebody new. So whoever works the hardest, whoever, um, you know, shows their passion and commits themselves to, uh, putting their case forward towards the voters. Uh, and the voters will ultimately decide. So those races are always most interesting. Uh, because there's a lot to learn there too, based on the results of what happens after the twenty-fourth.
So this, this constituency in that sense is very unique. In the other three constituencies, the incumbents are also contesting elections.
Yes, so, so there's, uh, an incumbent running for the regional level, there's an incumbent running at the regional level against the current councillor who has vacated the position I'm running for and running for regional councillor, against a third, uh, candidate as well at the regional level.
And how many candidates there are at the regional, uh, level position? Just two or many?
Yeah, so, so each position gets selected one person. So regional council will have somebody elected.
No, no, that I understand. Like, how many people are contesting for that one seat?
Regional council, three opponents. The position I'm going for, five, including.
Five, including, okay. So that's, that's quite a competition.
Yeah.
And, uh, please, uh, next two minutes are yours. You're talking to your potential voters.
Yeah.
When you knock at a door, just give us a glimpse, how do you open the conversation? How do you carry the conversation?
Yeah. Well, absolutely. I introduce myself and say, hi, I'm Adil Kalfi. I am running for your, uh, local town councillor position here in Ward Three. I've lived in this community for the past ten years since twenty twelve and by way of profession, I'm a police officer. And that's the reason I'm running, to extend that public service into this role as well. And I also believe that as a young person who's diverse and energetic and passionate, that that's the type of representation we need in council. And then I open it up to them, you know, I, I want to hear it from residents because listening to residents is a key component of being a good advocate. And I always allow that opportunity for the resident at that door to voice their concern and ask those questions. And if they don't have any at the time, I refer them to my phone number and email address and contact information on the back of the card that I, that I give them, because I want to hear from them. Because the moment somebody stops listening is the moment they start becoming out of touch with the community. So even as a police officer, listening is ninety-nine percent of the job. And one percent of it is actually communicating back. And that usually is just solving the issue that's there based on the perspective that you've gathered. So my goal when elected is to be the best advocate I can be for Ward Three. Put people's concerns first and make the best decision possible and be accountable when things don't always go the right way.
Yeah, yeah. And when you open up, uh, this conversation, which is one of, which is, which one of the four issues gets more traction with the, like, your potential voters?
Yeah.
On which issue they delve more into conversation and ask you more follow-up questions?
Yes, so, so road safety and the, uh, lack of investment we have right now in our public services are the two most central themes I've heard. Uh, and then the other two come just pretty close to that as well. But, uh, the, the public services component and road safety is, is a huge concern that, uh, when they flip the card over and they see those things on the platform, uh, they really resonate with that because it's a real concern that they have.
Hmm. No, that's wonderful. And, uh, you, your volunteers also go knock at the door on your behalf or you are always with them? When, when like your team is knocking at the doors?
I am always there. I am always there. I usually have, I, I, I don't like going with a large group because I want to, you know, take over that position where the volunteer might have somebody at the door because I want to introduce myself to every single person that answers the door. So I have a handful of volunteers that will be knocking the next door right beside me. And as soon as I finish the conversation I'm having with the voter at my door, I try to run over and try to introduce myself to the, the, the voter that's at the door, my volunteers.
Last couple of questions. Now, you are doing a full-time job also, which is actually very, very full-time job being a police officer, as, as we say, twenty-four seven. So have you taken off, uh, from work or like, uh, and what are the times when you go out and knock at the doors?
I'm knocking throughout the day, um, throughout different times. Uh, I have balanced my vacation time. I haven't taken any additional time off. I've taken time off, uh, that I've already been allotted throughout the year as vacation time and booked it off in a way whereby I prioritize this campaign just as much as my current commitment at work as well. Um, so I'm knocking in the evenings, in the late afternoons. And, uh, any, any time I have, it's dedicated to this campaign on my days off when I'm not working as a police officer. Um, it means a lot to me to be able to do this and I'm going to continue working hard to be able to earn the support of the voters.
That's wonderful. And, uh, from like, uh, my conversation with you, I, I feel that energy and that passion and that compassion you will bring to this job. I wish you all the best. And I'm sure like, uh, if in this, uh, span of forty minutes, I have, uh, sort of, uh, yeah, you know, uh, felt that you have that, what it takes to represent people and to lead the community. I'm sure your voters will also, uh, feel that and believe in you. All the best and, uh, we wish you good luck. Hopefully, we'll be talking to you again after you have taken oath and you have run, I mean, you have served the community for a year or so to see like how it is, uh, feeling after like a year or so into the job. All the best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, viewers, uh, for watching this show. Uh, we were talking to Mr. Adil Khaleki, who was, uh, who is contesting election from Milton Ward Three. Uh, next week, we will come with another candidate and till then, we bid you good night. Thank you.